Well, it is time for us to start, so I welcome everyone to this evening McMinnville City Council work session on the September 22nd, 2021, Wednesday evening. This evening, we have a joint work session with two different committees. First will be a joint work session with the Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Advisory Committee, and then we will later in our meeting have a joint Council and Budget Committee work session. So again, I welcome those that are on the line. We've got members of our DEI Committee, and we welcome them. So at this point, I think what we'll do is turn -- well, I'll call the meeting to order, and then I'll turn it over to Kylie, which is our staff representative. And Kylie, you can introduce some members of the DEI Advisory Committee to us, and then we'll go into our discussion. So, welcome.
Thank you. I'm going to do a real quick handoff over to our committee chair, Christine Bader, because she does have a slide in the presentation that introduces all of our committee members. So I think all of them are here or logging in right now. But Christine, if you want to take it away, and Claudia, we may just need to make sure that Christine has the ability to share her screen so that she can show her presentation slides.
All right. I think I have been granted such power, but we will find out in a moment. Great. And then I'm a co-host, but I think if I could not have to do the admitting of people, that's great. Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Mayor Hill, councilors, first of all, just thank you so much for the opportunity to serve on this committee. All nine of us are really excited for this opportunity to serve our community and join you in helping make McMinnville an even more welcoming and inclusive place for everybody. So thank you for that, and then thank you for tonight, for taking the time to engage with us. We're excited to share with you what we've been doing so far and what we've been thinking so far in the six months that we have been working together. So with that, I am going to attempt to share my screen. Let's see how this goes.
It looks good, Christine.
Excellent. Fantastic. All right. So as Kylie said, by way of introduction, this is your DEI Advisory Committee, and I think all of us are here tonight. So everybody can, you know, wave hi. So we've all opted into two, three, or four-year terms. Some of us with roles, with titles, and chair and vice chair initially for a one-year term. And this is our roster. So what we've done so far, we had our first monthly meeting in March, meeting on the second Thursday of every month. And here's what we've done so far. We spent a little bit of time getting to know each other. We have shared updates from around the community, from different events that we've attended, from issues that are going on in our own communities and circles. We have heard from one department head at each meeting. So far, we have heard from legal, library, police, and planning. And we've got one department head scheduled for every meeting through the spring. We have started to do research on different DEI resources and what other cities are doing, so we'll talk about that in a moment. And we have started to develop this work plan, which has resulted in the plan that was in your packet, and we'll discuss tonight, and into three subcommittees and our initial set of actions that we would love to get your feedback on. So initial findings, just a very high-level summary. This will not surprise any of you, but there is no one-size-fits-all approach to DEI. We can't just take Tulsa's or even Beaverton or Hillsborough's program off the shelf and recommend it to you all for adoption. Every community has its own history and context, obviously. So that said, a lot of the cities that we've looked at, their work tends to fall into two broad categories, and that is inward-facing and outward-facing. Inward-facing is really actually, as we talked about at the meeting when you all approved our appointments, it's really getting into every nook and cranny of city departments, understanding the policies and practices, and looking at all of it with a DEI lens. In particular, a lot of cities seem to be looking at four areas in city government. It's human resources, so recruitment, retention practices, procurement and contracting, how is that money being distributed? The service delivery itself, with a specific focus on public engagement. And again, you'll see a lot of that reflected in our work plan when we get to it. And then the second category is really outward-facing, so proactively reaching out to historically underserved and underrepresented communities around service delivery, but also around participation on committees like this one, on boards running for office. So those are the two broad categories, inward-facing and outward-facing. So those are really reflected in the three subcommittees that we then set up. The first two reflect these, so a government-facing subcommittee and a community outreach subcommittee. That's the inward-facing and the outward-facing. And then as we started to talk more about what we wanted to do as a committee, a third subcommittee arose, which was really focusing on DEI resources. And again, you'll hear from each of those subcommittees in just a minute. So we'll dive into the work plan, which again was in your packets, but we'll go through it at a high level here. Just a couple of notes before we start. We have mapped the actions in the work plan to two documents. One of them was the ordinance that you all passed establishing this committee to make sure that we are aligned with the mandate that you all set out for us. We have also mapped these actions to the five engagement and inclusion objectives that were in the city strategic plan. Again, just wanting to make sure that there is alignment between all these different goals that we have as a city. Just a note on timeframe, we've put the actions into short, medium, and long term. And we also just wanted to flag that this is a pretty ambitious plan. We've got lots of goals here. And again, we've divided it by subcommittee, which sounds quite grand, but the subcommittees are two people or three people. And as you know, we're all volunteers, so we're excited about all of these things, and that's why we wanted to share them with you. But I think part of the feedback that we'd like to get is, are there things that we should prioritize, that you want to see sooner? Are there things that seem less salient to you? So we just want to flag that there are a lot of things in here, and we recognize that this is ambitious. There is also some overlap between the subcommittee's work, and again, we're just starting on these things, so they will become clearer as we go. We have also not included any budget implications, because it's too early to do that. And all of the things that are listed, we can start just with our own volunteer time and energy. And so certainly, if fiscal implications arise, we will come back to you with those. Okay. With that, before I get into the work plan, any comments or questions so far on that very quick overview?
Counselors, any questions for Christine? Christine, it looks like we're in good shape. You've done a great job of setting the agenda for this evening, so go ahead.
Fantastic. All right. So first, we will talk about the government-facing subcommittee, and that is myself and Efren, who's on here as well. We've got five goals for the subcommittee. And again, this was about getting into the kind of nooks and crannies, working with city leadership. And the first one is to collaborate with city departments to identify how DEI can really support their work. And this specifically translates into having each of the department heads present at our monthly meetings. These are basically 30-minute introductory conversations. Just to give us a sense of, it's kind of our city government 101 crash course. What do all these departments do? How do they do it? And then getting a little bit into, well, how does DEI fit in with their work? How can it actually support the work that they're trying to do? What are some of the challenges, and how might we carry this conversation forward? The second goal really flows from that, which is to go deeper with each of the city departments and conduct some sort of DEI assessment. Can we get a sense of where the department is at? What are some priority areas to move forward with? There is a specific tool that we are thinking about using for this, at least for starters. It's the Protocol for Culturally Responsive Organizations that Kylie has had some experience with. We can talk about that a little bit if anybody's interested. But it's a really good, comprehensive tool that lays out nine areas to look at, including things like governance, workforce composition, public engagement, and just gives a list of questions to ask. And you give a rating from a scale of zero to five, and then it spits out a score, so you can get some sense of where you're at. So this would be goal number two. And you know, we're thinking about, should we develop a lighter version of the tool? Because it's pretty intensive, but in any case, that's what that goal is all about. The third goal is supporting the incorporation of DEI into the city budgeting process. And Jennifer, who I see is with us tonight, I know she's already on top of this, so this is just about doing whatever we can to support her in that effort. Goal four is really a placeholder goal. This is a big part of our mandate and why you established this committee. But it's also the hardest to put specific actions on, because it really is just about staying abreast of everything that ends up on your plate and seeing how we can support you all to provide a kind of DEI lens. So two examples of issues that have come up so far, distribution of the ARPA funds and the other topic that you're talking about tonight, about potential new revenue streams. And again, it's figuring out really how we can help provide that DEI lens. So that's really just about, you know, proactively really having Counselor Drabkin as our liaison, just keep us informed as to what's going on and see how we can help. And finally, for this subcommittee, it's about the diversity in the city workforce, contractors, and on boards and commissions, and that's working with Kylie to understand what data do we collect, what constraints and issues are there around data collection, and starting to dive more deeply into that. So that is our government-facing subcommittee. Any questions on any of that before we move on to the second subcommittee?
Counselors, any comments or thoughts? Christine, we look like we're in good shape.
All right. Fantastic. Oops, that's the wrong way. Okay. Next up, our community outreach subcommittee. Maggot.
Thank you, Christine. And City Council member of the DEI Committee, thank you for wanting this time. It's been really exciting for the past few months to help establish this new committee in McMinnville. So I am Maggot Abukibish. In conjunction with Tony Lai and Cecilia Flores, we're heading the community outreach subcommittee. And we have four main strategies that tie to different initiatives within MAC -- let's hear the MAC plans, my apologies. So the first one is really to be proactive outreach to the underrepresented members of our community, right? It's hard to say what our community needs without having the voice of the community before we really dive deep into our initiatives. So this is really posing engaging our underserved and underrepresented members of the community, whether this be through non-government agency representation, reaching out to local business. And the intent here really is to give some feedback of where the DEI committee should really be focused. We don't want to go down a strategy or path that isn't representative of the needs of the community. The second strategy here is to ensure accessibility and inclusivity of the city's physical spaces. So this would be in conjunction with the planning department, as well as the government-facing subcommittee. And the intent here is that the city-owned buildings and spaces are welcoming to all members of our community, whether that be bilingual signage, employee engagement, as I mentioned, space signage, and other recommendations we'll make to the facility as well, or to City Council. Our third goal here is to develop plans for outreach, opportunities to increase diversity in all areas of our city leadership, not really to look at our city's existing strategies for improving outreach, identify what our best practices are, to be really inclusive, again, of our local community. And our last one, when we had Jenny come speak to the DEI committee, we had a real exciting opportunity to help partner with the library and ensure that the collection is inclusive and representative of our demographics here. I think, you know, growing up personally, the library was a very safe haven for me and very welcoming, and we want to make sure that that's also the same for all the neighborhood residents. So that's a fun operation, looking to engage the library. Any questions?
Doesn't look like, so we can move on?
Great. We will move on to our third subcommittee, DEI Resources. Sarah.
Hello. Good evening. My computer has chosen this very opportune time to decide the camera doesn't want to work, so my apologies. But yeah, my name is Sarah Schwartz. I'm McMinnville-born and raised, and just absolutely thrilled to be serving on this committee for a city that I love so much. So for our DEI Resources Subcommittee, our first strategy is to identify appropriate opportunities to educate and equip city council and staff. This looks like us reaching out to DEI officers at local institutions of higher education, as well as DEI committees and neighboring towns to identify resources that have worked for them or that they might recommend. The plan is to work through a few of those as a committee and then present a short list that we recommend to you, the council, as well as city staff. Our second strategy is to help the city better understand the current makeup of McMinnville's diverse groups and their various needs by developing presentation materials for the city website and elsewhere. We want to create visually engaging content that contextualizes McMinnville's demographic data so that we can better visualize who is McMinnville, and therefore, we can better serve our citizens. Our third strategy is to promote public awareness and appreciation of McMinnville and Oregon's diverse histories and cultures. We envision partnering with local businesses, organizations, and events to put informative materials on display to tell a full, rich story of the diverse groups of people that have called McMinnville and Oregon home and that call it home today, to expand our collective imagination of what it means to be a citizen of McMinnville. Are there any questions?
Go ahead, councilors. Sarah, doesn't appear that we have any questions, so Christine, we can move on?
All right. That is it. That is the plan. So again, these are initial thoughts. I'm going to stop sharing my screen so that I can see all of your smiling faces, which is much better. These are initial thoughts. So obviously, we will sort of keep moving forward with all of them and keep coming back to you. I would love, we would love to hear your feedback on, are there things that particularly piqued your interest that you want us to move faster on rather than slower? Are there, is there anything missing? And so feedback on any of that. And then also just to think about going forward, how you would like to stay engaged and be advised, as is our mandate. So any feedback on any of that is most welcome now or at any point, really.
Well, Christine, I'd like to just share a couple of things. Number one, you know, as we went through the process of selecting the candidates for the DEI committee, Council President Drabkin, myself, and Kylie had an opportunity to meet with, I think there were 19-plus candidates, and every single one of them brought experience, knowledge, all of them passion for this topic. And we had to narrow that down to nine, and that was one of the hardest interviewing processes I've been through as a city councillor and as the mayor. But I can tell you, as you've listened to the presentations this evening, how articulate and when you look at the resumes of these individuals, I was taken back that we had this kind of expertise in this community. And it comes from personal experience, but in many instances, individuals that are involved from an employment standpoint that have insights. And so I think from my perspective, when we started this process with a table of 12 discussion in the community, and then Kylie and I were pushing and pushing and pushing, and we just had to find the right timing and the resources to do this, but I couldn't be any more excited about this group. And I've tried to make almost all of your meetings, so I know what's happening behind the scenes other than at the committee level. And so when I look at the action plan, and when I look at the detail and the growth that has transpired since March, I'm just amazed. Okay? Because I get involved with almost every committee and in such a short time period to have an action plan that you're bringing before the council and saying, are we on the right path? And from my perspective, I mean, you know, we need to have more training as a group, totally, because we don't know what we don't know. But I'll tell you, as you've broken yourselves into three committees and you have executable direction, you've got accountability to that, even though they are somewhat broad, I just see the next, you know, the next few months even more refining and refinement. And we have to find that working relationship between your, this committee and the council so that we find the value that we need to have from a council perspective. Again, this is new for us. It's something we've talked about for a long time, but I couldn't be more proud of the expertise that this committee has and look forward to a lot more dialogue with this committee. I think I'm going to step out and just say, you know, Remy, would you like to just share some thoughts? Because as the council liaisons and you've been so involved in this group, you might want to share a few things just to set the tone for the council, too.
Oh, wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council that are here, and members of the DEI committee who are all here this evening. I think I would just say that the workflow of this group, the willingness to, not to show up to the meetings, but to do additional work outside of meetings, has been exceptionally impressive. Everybody is looking for what they can be doing in between meetings to better enrich the committee and thereby the community. And so it's a wonderful group to be working with. And the presentations from our department heads have also been wonderful and exceptionally informative, and so we're very grateful for the preparedness of all of those department heads that have come to present and talk about not only the work that they're doing, but work they want to do or know they could be doing. And so this is a great committee to the council, I would say. This is a great committee to give good, clear direction to. They are exceptionally responsive and hardworking and hard at work on this. And so if you do have ideas of what you saw, what you would like prioritized in those goals, giving that direction at this time would be wonderful and very beneficial to the ongoing work of the committee, and thank you again.
Thank you, Remy. The one piece that I looked at, and that's under G5, and under G5, we've got the heading of excesses, diversity in city workforce contractors, and on boards, and on commissions. And I don't know if, you know, one piece that I'm very passionate about, and I almost, at one point, I suggested that we call it the DEIL Committee, because I wanted leadership to be a part of that. Because I think our diverse population needs to have opportunity to develop their skills in leadership so they feel more comfortable to serve on committees and at the city level. We find ourselves not too diverse in some of our committees. And so I don't want us to lose sight that in giving, being an advisory committee to the city helps us keep our DEI lens on, but I truly want to make sure that we have a leadership component to this that helps grow the workforce or the volunteer workforce within the city so that we hear more voices and we're attuned to that. And, you know, the only leadership course that I see that's available is The Chamber, but that's more of a global leadership with cities and those types of things, and there's a heavy, there's a heavy price to pay for that. And I would like to see us just have some focus of this committee, how we could do some ad hoc leadership training so that, you know, next year, when we have openings, we're going to see more diversity on our committees, thus more participation. So I throw that out. We talked a little bit about that, but that's really important to me.
Great. I think, Mr. Mayor, too, if I can just respond briefly, I think it's actually so important to us that in some ways, it's reflected in all three subcommittees. So in the government-facing subcommittee, you're right under that goal. I think that's about understanding, well, where are we today? What data do we collect? Are we constrained from collecting any kind of data? What should that look like? The community outreach subcommittee is looking at, how do we actually recruit people for these positions when they come up, and what are some of the barriers, right? And then the DEI Resources Committee is also looking at, you know, Hillsborough has, Larry, was it a civic leadership academy, right? And so there are other cities that do training for people in the community to prepare them for these sorts of positions. So we agree with you with prioritizing that. Thank you.
Great. I thought Kelly's hand and then Sal's hand. So Kelly?
Well, I think you may have answered my question, because, yeah, I'm particularly interested is how you're going to bring these people in and get them involved. And I think probably more than anything else, I'm really curious to hear about that first more than anything. But obviously, you are handling it in three different areas and bringing it all together, so it's pretty exciting. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Sal, and then Remy.
Thank you, Mayor. Christine, and I just really first wanted to say thank you for your work, and thanks to all of the members on the DEI Committee for the time that you're putting into this. It's really appreciated. It seems to be one of the more active committees, and with the work happening significantly between the meetings, you know, that is really a wonderful sign. I just had one small suggestion, which is that we had a wonderful presentation, the first presentation by the Fair Housing Alliance, that talked about Oregon's history and really gave a lot of context that I wasn't familiar with. And I was going to suggest, under the R3 strategy, that we might want to make that presentation more easily available on the city website, because I think it really provided a lot of context for regionally, kind of how we got here as a state. So that's just the one comment. And again, thanks to everybody for your good work and your participation.
Thank you, Sal. Let's go to Remy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is just a slight continuation on the conversation you started and that Counselor Mankiewicz was talking about. And just to add the perspective-- And just to add the perspective of, and this is something I've talked about a lot over, especially the last year and a half, that when you have a committee, or a commission, or a board that isn't itself diverse, the goal isn't to appoint a person from a minority community specifically, but to evaluate the committee itself and why you're not reaching or attracting or advertising to minority voices. And so I think the work that's wrapped up in this, and kind of the questions you're asking of what are you going to do, it is the essence of the work of the committee to do that evaluation process, find those missing pieces of where outreach isn't happening, so that when we are advertising for committee positions and board committees, that we will be advertising and speaking to a larger audience, and that should in time produce more diverse committees. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Zach.
I think Efrem had his hand raised long before me, so I'll...
Okay, Efrem, and then Zach. Go ahead, Efrem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. I think, yes, there's definitely, needs to be a focus on training, but one of the things that we don't take lightly, that we don't take lightly, is the opportunity to be a lens for the council itself. And we do hope that you use us in that way, right? You can buy a pair of lenses and put them to the side and leave them there. It doesn't really serve its purpose. So we do hope that you know that we're there. We are not necessarily experts in everything, and we do not claim to represent the entire community that we serve, but we do hope to provide a different way of seeing the world. And we hope that as opportunities arise, that you do involve us in those. You know, it's, we can read the newspaper sometimes and find a great project that the city's doing, and sometimes I go, oh, hey, we should be part of this. Why, we, you know, I think it's easy to forget sometimes, you know, you can certainly, you can add things and quickly forget about them, or not realize that they're there. But we just want to make sure that the work kept in the loop, and that when you do see opportunities for us, that you do bring us into that work. I did want to share one other thing. We do know that DEI work can be, you know, a bit intimidating, and it can be different, and depending on where people are in their journey, people feel different about it. And our hope is not to point faults, or criticize, or when we're talking to department heads, it's not, oh, this is, you know, or, you know, rank people in any way. We've been, like, you know, extremely impressed with the collaboration, and that's already a first step, right? To get everybody on the table, to talk to different departments, and know where they're at in their journey, and then to just offer sort of a, hey, we're here, we can work with you, and this isn't a one-time thing. We're not meeting with you one time and then, you know, saying goodbye. We're hoping to continue to meet and see how we can both grow in this journey in order to support the city that we live in and love. Thank you.
Efrem, thank you. And that just reminds me, from a perspective, we do need to work out how often this committee needs to come before the council, because it is an area that is a new area for us to engage at the council level. So Kylie and council leadership will be working towards that ends and those means. Let's go to Zach.
Thank you. Glad I let Efrem go first. I will dunk his alley-oop that he threw me with the beginning part of his, because that kind of was really, the one I had was, you know, it doesn't, it's not necessarily a line item to add or suggest, but in that sort of R category, even like a sub-bullet of R1 would be just sort of preparedness and carve-out time to respond to things and get involved as necessary as we do things like, you know, the MacPAC process, where we tried to create our own DEI lens for that, and get involved in those things. And as we move forward with the, you know, revenue discussions, the staff was great in putting things in, how those will impact, but getting the DEI community to ensure that we're making those right decisions. So just sort of, if, and if we're able to fund all these cool, exciting projects we've got over the time, with transportation system plans, and lots of new plans, and lots of future casting for the great future of the city, getting you guys involved in running those plans through you, or running you through those plans, and getting this group involved as those things pop up. And I think council liaison president, President Council Liaison Drabkin, however you guys are referring to her, would be a great, great, to use her discretion, to involve you guys in, and involve those programs and connect those things. And so I think, yeah, the only thing I would like to see, just acknowledge and ensure that there's time on the schedule, is to get involved with our programs and studies that are always going on with the city, and ensure that those are being done in as low of barrier process as possible. So, thank you. This is, and whoever wrote this work plan, you could just send your resume over to me, because this will be really helpful. You guys, I'll hire you guys in a second. This is great.
You're gonna have to hire all nine of us.
Deal.
Thank you, Zach. Chris?
I don't have a lot to add to the conversation. I just do want to express my appreciation for the work that's been done. I appreciate seeing an action plan, seeing, you know, things laid out in a way that's clear and concise. And I know that the time and the effort that goes into doing something like that is, I don't take it lightly. So I just wanted to express my appreciation to Christine and the group. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris. Okay, any other, Jeff, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Wanted to thank Kylie and Council President Drabkin, and the entire committee for the work they've done so far. And while I agree with one of Christine's opening statements, when you've seen one city's DEI plan, you've seen one city's DEI plan. And at the same time, cities in particular are, we're sort of creatures of rules. We have resolutions, and ordinances, and charters, and processes, and services that we deliver. And so I would encourage the committee to sort of keep an open eye and an open mind as to when they find things here that they think are working particularly well, what of those things might be considered best practice that another community could emulate. And we may have different outcomes or different impacts that we need based on the makeup of our respective communities, but some of the goals and aspirations could be similar, some of the processes could be similar. So I'm interested in the work that we're doing primarily for the benefit of this organization and community, but I also think that other communities like ours can learn from our work. And so I would encourage the committee, if, you know, with the committee's sort of assent, and with the council's permission, to sort of be thinking about it in a sort of more global perspective, too, about how other communities could benefit from the work that we're doing here in McMinnville.
Thank you, Jeff, for those comments, because...
I have a couple of specific ideas I can share with the committee at another time, so...
Okay, thank you, Jeff. I can tell you that, you know, one community that we've already made mention of is Hillsborough, and I've had the opportunity to meet with Mayor Callaway a number of times, and they're willing to work with us. All we have to do is reach out, and Steve had indicated that they, they, to Jeff's message, they want to help others grow in this lens and this initiative. But at the same token, I've talked to every mayor in our county that are, they're watching what we do and how we do it also. And so they're open to, you know, learning from us. And I think that's the greatness of communities. As we work together, we help one another be better. So I'll advocate for what Jeff said, is look for opportunities to get from other communities, but also give. And I can help connect you with the right people in every city within Yamhill County, and if that's important. Okay, any other comments? Well, with that, then, thank you, committee, and you're welcome to stay on, and we're going to have a discussion, that's an ongoing discussion, as we look at working with the Budget Committee, and looking at resources and sustainable city services. But again, thank you so very much. And so with that, I will move to our second item this evening, which is a joint McMinnville City and McMinnville Budget Committee Work Session. And we are continuing our discussion, if I'm not mistaken, this is our fourth discussion on resources and sustainable city services. And we'll hear from Jennifer, and I think Jeff will have a little bit of that. I don't know, Jeff, if you want to start it out for us, and then pick up with Jennifer where we've left off. But we've received a pretty substantial information in the packet today, and I hope everyone had an opportunity to look at it, so that we can continue that discussion going forward. I recognize many individuals from the Budget Committee and from city staff that are with us at this point. So Jeff, I'll let you just open it up, and then you can turn it over to Jennifer, and we can move forward.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. Just a little bit of setting the stage, in part for tonight's conversation, and in part for next week, as we continue the discussion. We will be focusing tonight primarily on the revenues side of the equation, which is where we've spent a lot of time, sort of in the publicly facing exercise so far, and recognizing that it's really hard to formulate solution sets without having a full view. We have been spending a lot of time at the staff level to bring together a pretty robust report on our core services. And we talked to the council at an earlier council meeting about sort of the format that we would present that information to you. That information is now in your inbox. We posted that agenda packet earlier today. We don't expect that you will have the opportunity to read it, although maybe you've had a chance to take a look at the cover memo. We just want to make sure that, particularly from a public perspective, that people understand that this is not just an exercise in raising money. This is an exercise of looking for resources to fill service gaps, or to make improvements in needed services, as the community expects or demands, and as the council wants to deliver. And so with that, as a setup, you have a lot of information in front of you tonight. You'll have a lot of information on the service side of the equation for next week, and we are going to spend relatively little time presenting to you, and most of our time taking questions and listening to your observations. And then, as you have the opportunity to have these next two conversations, specifically about revenue options and service levels, that in the following month, where you have an opportunity to do some more contemplation, we've already started the work to do some community engagement and feedback, particularly on the ARPA funding options. Most of you have had perhaps the opportunity to see the survey that we launched earlier. We'll also be planning to bring forward to the council, in addition to recommendations, suggestions for how we continue to engage stakeholders and the community more broadly than just the Budget Committee and the council, to get some feedback on any areas where the council thinks you have interest in moving forward, or some potential consensus for both solutions on the revenue and the service side. And we would expect that in the course of, if we stay on time, in the course of that October 20th work session that's already scheduled, the Budget Committee would ultimately make a recommendation to the council for consideration, and that the council would shortly after that either adopt or amend those recommendations from the Budget Committee that would give us some policy direction on how to explore implementation plans, timetables, strategies, the steps that you and we would need to take, both the staff at the policy level, to implement any changes that you are recommending, and to do that in a way that also engages the community over the next two, maybe three months, with an idea that final decisions would be made pretty early in the calendar year, that could allow us to shape a budget for 2021, for 2122, that reflects the council and the Budget Committee's recommendation and directions, as well as to have implementation plans that may launch even during the course of the current fiscal year. So with that sort of high-level setup, and the recognition that until you have next week's meeting, you'll still be sort of waiting for that service-level impact conversation with respect to revenue options, I will now turn it over to Jennifer to lead the brief presentation, and then engage the council in observations, questions, and answers. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. So Jennifer, go ahead.
Yeah, great. So let's see, if I, I just, I just saw Claudia's chat about the share screen. Let's see if we've got it. Looks like we do. So are you able to see the presentation now? Great.
It's good.
So during this session, because the core services discussion was moved off of this, we actually do have more time beyond an hour, if you so choose to take it, to spend talking about the resources. Because what, as Jeff indicated, I want to spend a real short amount of time just kind of presenting what the basic staff recommendation was, and then show you those two little benchmarking studies that I did. And then just, it's over to you guys for discussion. And we hope that we're able to surface any other pieces of information, or analysis, or considerations, or going back to the drawing board, that you guys need to be able to be in a position to make the recommendation on October 20th. So that's kind of what we'll be doing here. Next slide, there we go. So the staff recommendation is essentially twofold. The areas or the options that we think will actually be able to raise enough money to address some of the fiscal challenges, it's a combination of the, doing a service fee based on utility consumption in some kind of format, whether it's proportions, percentages, flat rates, we need to get into those details. We believe that because it's scalable, and is able to efficiently raise dollars in the seven-figure range, and it also really critically shows some promise for being able to craft some kind of waiver or discount program to mitigate the impact for members of the community who are least able to contribute. And we may logistically be able to bring it online in time for the next budget year, starting July 1, 2022. We also think it's a good choice, because it offers like a bridge to making progress in the near term towards the balanced budget concerns that we've got, while the community conversation continues around establishing an independent fire district. So that seems like it's flexibility is a really strong attribute. And then looking at the benchmarking study, which we'll look at in a couple minutes, it does look like this is something that many communities are doing in Oregon, and as we're all having to deal in different ways with the structural funding gap that has been mentioned on numerous occasions, where property taxes, the largest source of our unrestricted revenues, are capped at a 3% growth rate, but most of our cost drivers principally payroll expenses and city services or people, they tend to increase at a higher rate than that. So that creates the structural funding gap. Then finally, it's just, it's a pretty predictable revenue base, and probably wouldn't be subject to significant shifts with business cycles. So then, I'm not going to speak much about the special districts, this is the fire district, but I think the deadline was just last week for the different communities to let us know whether they're going to sign in or not. And I haven't been looped in. I'm not sure where we're at, but that conversation continues. And choices made over there in terms of what tax rate, and what ultimately the council wants to do in terms of the city's permanent tax rate, the service fee would be able to flex to kind of match choices made over there. So I see... So I see Chris's hand. Chris, do you have a question or a comment?
Yeah, just a quick question. Do we have anybody on the call that can tell us where we are at with that fire district?
Yes, I can do that right now. So I think you got a report at the last council meeting that the Amity Rural Fire District voted to continue the process. Earlier, we had received a letter from the McMinnville Rural Fire District that they were interested. The department that serves the New Carlton Fire District and the City of Lafayette are both interested as well. And it sounds like the City of Dundee is potentially interested. The only, we're not interested at this time, firm decision we got was from the City of Dayton. So most of the players are still interested, and I'll have Chief Lightford talk in a little bit more detail about next steps if he is on the call tonight. If he, oh, I see Rich is. So Rich, if I can turn to you to maybe just talk about next steps briefly, and then we'll have a more robust conversation at a following council meeting.
We are scheduled to meet with a consultant. We were scheduled this Friday, but he had an appointment come up. We'll be scheduled, we will be meeting with him Monday afternoon telephonically. Next steps, preliminary next steps to discuss the next steps, primarily it will be gathering together representatives from each of the folks that are interested in, organizations that are interested in moving forward, and start working on the governance and the issues that you're discussing right now, potential tax rates, benefits, what the process looks like moving forward, and starting to look at the legal description of the, what the boundaries would be for the districting. So all those are administrative tasks that will be happening, but there's going to have to be cooperative collaboration between the folks that are moving the district forward to come to some sort of answer, and the consultant will be working us through those processes.
All right. Thank you, guys. Thank you, Chris, for the question. I'm going to ask a question about the service fees based on utilities. We had a McMinnville Water and Light Commission meeting last night, and we talked a little bit about that. And Jeff, it's my understanding that we're going to, as a city, come and make a presentation to the MAC Water and Light. Not that they have decision-making ability in here, but they will be the service provider that will administrate the fees and all of the things from that perspective, and I know they have some real strong thoughts on that. Are we scheduled to meet with MAC Water and Light?
So we don't have a specific schedule. I met with John Dietz today. Jennifer has been meeting with Mark Dunmire, her counterpart, on a regular basis, and has another meeting with them already on the books. We've shared the information that the council has received and have offered to come to a subsequent meeting of the Water and Light Board, either make a similar presentation to what we'll be doing tonight and next week, or to simply answer questions that the board may have. John, I think will take us up on that. He needs to take a look at what his future agendas look like, but I could see that we might be in front of the Water and Light Board either in October or November at their regular meeting. So more to come on that.
Thank you, Jeff, and that's what I understand also. One of the things that we talked about last night is that, you know, when you're looking at a service fee on water and electric, we have a disparity between who we provide electricity to, which is about 14,000 clients, as compared to who we provide water to, which is about 12. So there's somewhere between 2,000 and 3,000 household differences, because we can provide electricity outside of the city limits, but water is not provided outside of the city limits. So we've got that disparity. And then to, you know, be able then to put the formula together, we have to pull all of those individuals that are not within the city limits out, so it's not just taking all of our electric and water clients and putting it into a formula. So there's going to be, there's going to be some lifting that needs to happen from that perspective. And then one last question I have on this topic. As I read, as I read the comments, Jennifer, you know, we're trying to get to a point where we will have the fire department as a district, and then they will be funding And I don't want to read anything into what I read, so that's why I'm asking the question. Could the service fee on utilities be a short-term stopgap to help us balance the budget or have revenue as we move forward to the districting? And then we reevaluate the rate of fee or the mechanism to put the utility service fee on the books once the fire district is on their own and we have more capacity within our tax limits? Does that make sense?
Yes, absolutely. And this is, that's one of the things that makes this option so attractive and a good fit, I think, for us, because it's scalable. And so, as you mentioned, it absolutely is going to be a programming effort to properly figure out how we want to apply the fees, whether they're flat fees, whether we do things based on percentage, we can, there are several options, and we'll need to get some more professionals involved, too. So I haven't spent money asking people to help me yet until, you know, we have better indication of what direction you all want to go in. But we have been looking at options, and there are a number of ways to manage this. And so it will, there will be clearly interplay between these two things. And I mean, I could foresee a situation, you know, a few years down the road, when the fire district has been established and we understand also what the, what actually the revenues are that will come out of the service fee, because, you know, there will be some, there's some level of guesswork in the projections. So we'll have a better sense of that. And it may be something that kind of as part of the annual budget process, we're looking at, okay, what do we want to fund this year? What are the core services? Are there any capacity building or one-time things that the Budget Committee and the council want to do in this particular year? It's like, okay, so then the service fee means it goes up or down to do that particular scope of work for the next year. I could imagine something like that emerging. And also, just, it's something that if we end up with more funds than we thought would be generated off of a formula, then as long as we are thoughtful about how we're doing the programming, we should be able to effect mid-year changes fairly easily, you know, as long as we're working well with MAC Water and Light and, you know, staying up on our communications. And I don't anticipate that that would be a problem. So, and does that, does that help?
It does, because it's clarified, for me at least, that in reality, the service fee on utilities could be seen kind of as a stopgap as we look for longer-term solutions. The one thing that I've been thinking a little bit about, and as I've talked to some of the people out in the community, is, you know, if we feel like the process of moving the fire district forward, and let's say that takes two years to accomplish, and let's say that in three years, we feel very confident that, as you indicated, we'll really know what each of those programs is helping us and what it's bringing to the table, I'm going to throw out a solution possibly that might be more palatable to the community, and that is, let's say that we do this service fee for four years and put a sunset on it, which allows us to come back, well, it doesn't allow us, it requires us to come back and really take a deep look at what the fire district's doing for us and what our needs are. And then the council will again be very involved, because there's a sunset clause on it. I know that may be more work, and it doesn't help the sustainability over the long term, but, you know, when we're looking at the kinds of revenue this is going to generate, and it is being paid for by our citizens, you know, I appreciated, I appreciated so very much the charts that showed, you know, where we are in our water and our electric costs. We're some of the lowest in the state of Oregon, but that hasn't come because of the city, that's come because of Water and Light and the good things that they're doing there. And so, again, just coming, putting a sunset clause possibly into this might be something that really allows people to say that we're going to be thoughtfully coming back to it from a council perspective. So I just throw that out, and again, that may not, I know from a staffing standpoint, it gives not the same sustainability that you're looking for, but we've got some moving parts out there. So I just throw that out as something to possibly take a look at.
So do you all want to, I'll mute, and then you guys can discuss on this.
Okay, yeah, because you had this as an area. So Kelly, let's go ahead, and then we'll take input from members of the Budget Committee and from the council. So Kelly?
Well, first, I want to thank the staff and everyone for all the work they've done on this. It's just amazing amount of work, and I really appreciate it. I was particularly taken with the concept of being able to use the utility fee for the next two to three years, or maybe four, and then being able to back off of it and let the benefits of the district take over, because I just honestly have some concern about how people might take us going out for two large chunks of money. You know, I desperately want to sell the whole backpack idea and things like that, and those are coming down the road. So, you know, it's important to me for people, this to be very palatable to our citizens, but, you know, to realize how important it is to have this security with the fire district. So that's my thoughts on it. I would tend to agree. I don't know if there's a moratorium on it, or maybe put it aside and don't look at it for however many years, and then bring it up or whatever, but I like the idea.
Other comments from those on the line?
I'll go ahead and jump in.
Go ahead, Sal.
Thanks, Mayor. I just first want to say, really was impressed with the report that you included in the packet, as well with the choices that the staff made in terms of which funding mechanisms to prioritize. I do agree with the mayor's idea for a sunset clause or review period for any of these taxes or any kind of fee increase that we may choose to do, because I think that gives future boards some kind of incentive to revisit the policy.
Beyond that, I don't really have any comments, other than as we look to electric and water rates as a potential revenue source, I appreciate, first, that it's broad-based, second, that you have the opportunity to discount the cost of those fees for less wealthy users, and third, I think it gives us an opportunity to evaluate whether the current fee structure that we have is a fair one. And I just want to make sure that as part of this review, you know, the commercial players that are paying a lower rate are going to have that rate reviewed as well and as part of this. And from an equity frame, I just think that's a really important part of it. So other than that, really good job. I won't comment on a couple of the secondary revenue streams, other than to just make the generic point that I generally agreed with the staff choices.
Thank you, Sal.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Go ahead, Zach.
Thank you. I'll start like we all have, and thank staff for the packet. It was a really enjoyable read, not that all staff reports aren't, but this was just really well laid out, and it, sort of every question I had was answered in the next sentence I read. And so it was, it was really a delight, and a lot of good information in there, and I feel like it is going to allow us to move, get some direction and move forward. So I think, you know, I'm feeling a little urgent and also buttonholed in that, you know, we're getting close to cracking open the budget and preparing and asking staff to build budgets for next year, to implement a lot of the really cool projects we've talked about and a lot of the really cool things that we want to do. And we just came off of a long period of staff furlough, and unless we do something to fix that, that's going to be the topic of conversation again. Buzzing through the core services, there's a lot of yellow in the below base and base, and if we want to, if we want to have a strong future in the city, we need to be going through that and investing in bringing those up and making concerted efforts and investments in that. I share the themes of being sort of fiscally concerned and not just wanting to out-and-out deluge our constituents in new fees and rate increases and things, but I also, you know, and none of this is disrespect or shade, but we have a pool that isn't open on the weekends. We have, we have grass that routinely gets so tall, you know, we can play hide-and-seek easily in it in our parks. And we need to be really radically investing in our ability to deliver services and our workforce that does that, and we have it for a long time. And I think a half-measure, you know, back to the buttonholing, is we have a lot of things that we're considering all at once. How much is it going to cost to have a pool that's open all the weekends? How much is it going to cost to, as Mike said on his, Mike Bissett said on his way out, we have, we don't have a consistently funded street program to continue to pave potholes. I mean, how much is it going to cost to do all those things? Are they things that we want to do? How much money do we need? And all of the while, thinking about sustainably delivering those and delivering a sustainable message to staff to know year over year how to build a long-term budget to do those for year over year, not knowing where we're at in the fire department, who's coming, what's that cost, what are we going to do with what we tax? All those things are a little bit tough, but I'm a little bit reluctant or hesitant to put three-year funding cycles in front of staff and sort of half-fund programs, half-fund projects. I'd love to see us just set this in motion with routine checks on how and if we need to continue to invest or go up versus, you know, taking it away, letting it disappear, changing it, not doing it one year, doing it twice, you know, another years and other things. So I think we should really be laser-focused on pushing that number-one item through on their projected schedule of October 22nd, and I really agree with the rest of the items on there and want to continue to do those, but really, laser-focused, I think we should be on setting in motion, setting up that number-one program in time to impact the budget, and then the discussion be around what those percentages are and how do we put our thumb on the scale to ensure it's equitably applied in a uniform manner, so.
Thank you, Zach. Sal, you have your hand up?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Zach, great points, as always. My question for you is, would you feel more comfortable if, rather than a sunset clause, it was a three-year review or something like that, where you get an opportunity to review the tax, much as we do with other kinds of policies?
Yeah, yeah, I think so. I think if it has a three-year, this is going to fall off if we don't do anything, it's sort of no different than the bad things that come with a, with a operating levy, right? We're great for those three years, but who knows if it's going to keep going versus the rate review, I think is a smart way to say, how is this going? What are we doing? What new projects have come up? What new things have we done? Did we do the fire district? Did we build a new community center pool facility that we need to staff and operate seven days a week, 24/7 type of thing? So I think versus a, with, versus a moratorium or a sunset, I think a rate review every three to five years is smart.
And then just from my perspective, and then Chris, after that, you know, the reason I say a sunset, and I put it out like for four years, if in three years, we see that it's doing what we need to do, we can move forward on that sunset. We don't have to wait the four years. The council can say, this is working the way we anticipated, but at the same token, I'm so cognizant of, you know, how we at the same token, I'm so cognizant of, of, you know, how we, how we take this out to our citizens. And, and by putting a sunset, they say that we're going to have a good, solid review and not just a, the council will review that in three years to make sure it works. The sunset for me helps the, the public understand that we're cognizant of the impact that it's going to have on them, whatever that rate may be. So I just throw that out from that perspective. I understand Zach what you're saying. It's my intent to do exactly what you're talking about, but by having the sunset, it just sends a little different message to the community. And like I say, if we get to a point in three years and we have a four-year sunset, we can have the discussion early and move forward and take the sunset off and then we know where we're at. Chris?
So obviously, thank you, Mayor. Obviously, I'm sure it's not going to come to anybody's surprise that I'm very bearish on any of this. However, sorry, I was trying to get my hand down. However, I will say I would wholeheartedly agree with you, Mayor, that, that if we're going to do something of this nature, that, that a sunset is going to be a much easier sell to the community, so to speak, than any of the other options. And so I, I would strongly urge the council consider that as, as the approach that we take. Secondarily, I would also urge that if we are intending to keep the revenue that what is, that we're currently getting in order to fund the fire department, that we need to be very clear to the community that that's what we're doing. I don't think surprises work really well and the result tends to be a backlash. So I, I think both of those points need to be very, very clearly made. I also would like to extend and follow up with what Counselor Geary said, spot on in terms of this report. It was really nice. Well done. Thank you for the work. Thank you for the report. Thank you for the answering of the questions. So well done and thoughtfully throughout the, the report. It did make it a lot easier for me coming into this. I don't have a lot to say. So, thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Any other comments from members of the budget committee or counselors? And I think we're looking just at the two things that Jennifer had shared with us, item number 14 and item number 11. And those are the, the two that I think we're talking about right now. Go ahead, Kelly.
I, I did want to say that I appreciated and would support the other items that were brought up. But since that is the focus right now, I love the other one, I definitely support that idea.
Great. So I'll call on anyone to make further comments. And if we have none, then we'll turn it back over to Jennifer to continue with her presentation. I see Adam, go ahead.
Yeah. Really great report. I appreciate everybody that put time into it. And it's a great read. I would, I would think that putting a sunset on it would be an easier, easier sell to, to our constituents versus just a three-year review. I would also note that I don't think, once this goes into the budget, that it would ever actually sunset down to nothing, but it puts a hard line in the sand that we have to do something and not just around 36 months, we should go for a review. I'm fine going for a review at 36 months, but I do appreciate a, a hard line in the sand that, you know, this is, this is where the road ends if, if we don't do something going forward. And I think the constituents appreciate that as well. So that holds everybody accountable. And I share your sentiments, Zach, about, you know, how it looks for budgets and department heads. But as long as we as policymakers stay in front of that, not waiting till the 11th hour to go for that review, I think they will see consistency through the implementation of this type of revenue streams.
Thank you, Adam. Allison, you have your hand raised?
Uh, yes. Good evening, Council, Mayor, and members of the budget committee. I just want to say, I think a three-year sunset is probably too short. I mean, personally, I'm not very optimistic that the gap in the general fund is going to ameliorate over, over that period of time. I, I, as a citizen, I would be more in favor of a flat fee than a percentage fee, mostly because I've been subject to a percentage fee when I lived in Maryland. And it's interesting, but older houses, of course, can afford, tend to be spending more on utilities just by the nature of their, the age of their, you know, systems. And that, and it sometimes works out that people who can afford bigger and better and more modern houses end up paying less. So I, I would be more in favor of a flat fee. And I also think it's important that if this is going to be unrestricted money being used for the general fund, that people have a real sense of what that money is going to and can see that it is something that is going to profit them. Some of the things that Counselor Geary mentioned, perhaps, something that they can see direct response from. I would also be a little bit in favor. I haven't really studied the city's emergency management plan, but if any portion of something collected could go into a reserve for an emergency, I think that citizens could possibly appreciate that you were putting something together for the future that might benefit them if, if we have any kind of climate emergency. So that's just a suggestion. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Allison. Let's go back to Zach.
Thank you. I guess I'm, I'm struggling a little with the definition of, just gathering the context clues from some other comments here by counselors and budget committee members. I'm struggling with the definition of sunset and I don't know, maybe somebody can, can help me. Or I'd also like to ask maybe Jeff to weigh in and let me know what his thoughts on sort of these, these would be and how they impact staff and budget development. He has a miraculous way sometimes of smacking me upside the head and, and making me understand and still being friendly. So maybe that, first off with that, and then I'll have another comment after he gives his answer.
Great. Go ahead, Jeff.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Counselor Geary. So I, I think you're, you're not at a decision point yet. I think it's, I think it's good to get folks' perspective and ideas on these various concepts. I mean, one thing that we should be able to make clear as we wrap this process up is that the actions that the council intends to take, whatever those actions are, are intended to address a long-term funding gap for the organization. And to simply pick out a revenue and say, we're going to sunset this in three years or four years or five years, and then in three or four or five, find out that you still need all or part of that money. Oh, by the way, we're not going to sunset it. That could be seen as a breach by the voters and the constituents as well. And so what, what I think we need to be really intentional about is to acknowledge that we're trying to fix a long-term issue. Long-term revenue and service, long-term revenue and long-term expenditure strategies have to be knitted together to do that. Some of the things we're doing now may serve in a short term, but not in a long term. And so I, I just think keeping your options open and committing to being really flexible as time goes on and as issues change may be more important in terms of setting the community's expectations and allowing you to check in regularly than simply picking a sunset or a not sunset. But I mean, I could foresee the possibility that things would change legislatively in the next, you know, five or 10 or 15 years that would give communities either more options or fewer options in terms of how to fund services. And we need to be responsive to those changes that we, that we don't yet know are happening. You know, other, other issues could, could change as well. The way we deliver certain services may become outmoded or may be outmoded already. And we may need to be sort of more inventive and more innovative in terms of how we do certain things. And so, I mean, I, I, I think we take all of this conversation in and try to craft some policy options for you that get to the issues that you're talking about. And I think committing to regular and consistent reviews of how we're doing, what's working and what's not working. I think that's part of what this exercise is about. And, you know, whether you formally sunset or whether you formally do a full-on review is going to depend on the conditions at the time. I mean, you know, if we annex to a fire district and that frees up property taxes, that's, that's great. That helps. Those, remember those property taxes are, you know, the system of gathering property taxes are part of your long-range problem. So just relying on additional tax capacity pushes that jaw out. And when you look at the jaws graphic, doesn't fix it long-term. So anyway, that's kind of a long winded and a little bit rambling way of saying, I don't know what the right solution set is right now. I think ideas about regular reviews, sunsets, you know, retaining levy capacity, but not levying full taxes or letting revenue, letting taxing capacity go on a permanent or long-term basis. I mean, those are all the kinds of things you're going to be wrestling with over the next X number of months or years in the short term. And the more flexibility you maintain now, the more flexibility you have to make decisions in the future. And I think, you know, the test is ultimately what gets the consensus of the community and the organization and how you move forward. And then whatever commitments you do make, you stick with those commitments.
Thank you for that insight, Jeff. And Zach, if, if I can just make one comment and then we'll go back to you. The, the whole reason I thought about the sunset, and I, I'm not anticipating a three-year, but like a four-year, is the fact that if we do annex and, and we're able to put the fire district out on its own, we will have more taxing authority, whether that be a dollar fifty or $2. That's why I do that is because I'm seeing the annexation of the fire department helping us in the long-term have more capacity to tax the regular way, you know, bringing us back up to the 5.02. So again, I throw that out as, and, and again, no decision tonight. It was just something to think about because my whole thought was if we were to take it to the people in the vote, what would they vote for? I don't know. And we're not going to do that. But I look at things when it comes to these kinds of dollars, what would a vote of the people do for us? And if we put a sunset, I think it'd be an easier sell. But I just throw that out. So Zach, I'll go back to you.
Well, I know, Mr. Mayor, you've got a unique relationship and communication with the community and I, I respect that. I, I don't, that, the, also Jeff, your answer was, was, was helpful and articulate. I think a couple of things. One, I, I'd like to future-proof our decision and allow what we decide and move forward to, to, to have a life of its own. And I think building in continuous improvements, abilities for, ability for the future councils and groups to, to continuously improve that tool are, are smart. And, and I, for me, from what we've heard so far, I think those rate, rate reviews and rate renewal periods would be helpful versus a way for it to automatically fall off the cliff. I guess, I guess the, maybe the one where I, I guess where I'm sitting and how I view what we're being asked to provide for the city is less in terms of viewing us as the boogeyman and, and taking the money and taxing people and pulling more away and more in terms of viewing us as Santa Claus and saying, look at all this really cool stuff we want to do. Here's this really awesome list. There's hundreds of things. Here's the stuff we wanted to spend ARPA money on. Here's what those programs tie into. Here's the Mac Pack program. Here's all this cool stuff. And here's how we're going to be able to fund how to do that. And, and if, if that comes back, then we tried and, and failed in a really noble endeavor versus just kind of continued to trot along, which was a mentality I'm really thankful for that got us through some really scary times that other municipalities didn't get through. And now we have the ability to make this choice and to invest in the future of, of delivering current services and thinking more broad in what are we not delivering now that we get an opportunity to deliver? And what are we underserving our community on? And how can we deliver those better? And so I think, I think that that option provides us the best way to do that.
Thank you, Zach. Any other, any other comments before we move on?
I, I would just like to make one comment, which is that I, I do agree with, with both Jeff and Zach, that we should be very cautious about creating an unstable revenue source. The idea that we might make a difficult decision and then, you know, three or four years later have the city in a, in a similar situation would be very unfortunate, I think. So I, I am sort of leaning more towards the idea of, of a review. And also just caution people to, you know, let's not, I, I'm mindful of Zach's point. Let's not negotiate with ourselves. Let's not, you know, and we need to be cautious and prudent with these investments. But I do think that people will see them as investments. And, but, but I do think that before we get to the point where we're adding a lot of services, we need to basically make sure that we're, you know, meeting our obligations. And I guess the other point I'd make is that it seems to me that the fire portion, fire and EMS portion of our shortfall is about a million bucks. And that's not the full shortfall. So, you know, we do need a, a stable piece to continue that irrespective of whether or not we pull the fire and EMS out. So I don't think we should be sort of making an assumption that fire and EMS comes off of our books and into its own district. And then all of a sudden, all of the city's problems are solved. I mean, by my count, you know, maybe half or 40% of our problems are solved financially at that point. So just, just my perspective. Thank you.
Thank you, Sal.
Yeah, I must admit that
Go ahead, Kelly.
Being able to continue having some, I would hate to do all the work to go back getting a service fee and then throw it out the door. You know, it doesn't make sense. But I think some form of promise with the citizens as to how we're going to use it is critical for future.
Great. Okay. Jennifer, let's move forward with your presentation. Hopefully that was helpful and gave you some direction.
This is fabulous. But I do, I do want to make a commercial for the members of the budget committee to, you know, please speak up. I'm, I'm new to McMinnville and I know you all are, many of you are new to your roles and fairly new in the budget committee. But your, your perspective and insights and comments will be really important in the process. So just, I hope that wasn't out of turn. So.
Absolutely. Right on.
Then the, the next component of the staff recommendation is looking at kind of three things that, I mean, it, none of these things solve the, the fiscal imbalance problem, but they are things that when we did the research into these options seemed like things we should consider for, you know, honestly, for other reasons. So the business license fee, I know that prior to my coming on, but not too long in the past, there has been discussion of this. And there was, there was, I guess, mixed reviews in terms of the business community, part of the business community comfortable with this kind of a program. Other, other business owners, less so. So it didn't move forward. But just the experience of going through the last year and a half with the, with the COVID epidemic, just the, it's been, it's been a rough thing that we haven't had a direct line of communication with all of the business sector within town to be able to communicate, to get, you know, full information about, you know, what are they're going through? What do they need? We weren't able to spend all of the money that we had earmarked for business support in a program that Heather ran about 12 months ago. So I just, I think having a business registry, there just, there's a lot of value in that. It's a two-way street. So, so that's kind of my editorializing on that element. The next is internal finance. The next is internal financing for capital investments. So, so this is, this is where McMinnville has an interesting set of circumstances that really work well for this instrument that is available to, to all municipalities in Oregon. Funds that have cash that they don't need to be using near-term are allowed to invest, get higher rates of return by lending their money to other funds in the organization for capital purposes. It's a maximum of 10 years. It's, you know, it's all laid out in the, in the statutes. And because we have the funding strategy over at Wastewater of wanting to build the resources ahead of making the big capital investments, they, while this is a very good funding strategy for ratepayers because at the backend, we won't be financing big old projects for the future, which saves the ratepayers money. But this is an opportunity to earn ratepayers a lit, you know, a little bit on the margins of that cash that's sitting there waiting for the big projects. So that, that married with the fact that we have a long-term unfunded capital investments program. It just, it, two needs that fit together well. So I am, we did not include any internal financing in the current fiscal year budget. There is actually one loan, very specifically, that I would really love to refinance and bring to you this year in order to save both taxpayers and ratepayers a little bit of money. So if this is something of interest, I would probably be bringing you an opportunity to execute on this type of financing in the fairly near term. And then the last option here is a new thing is in November, you'll be getting a presentation about the construction excise tax. And it's a tool that is primarily designed to support affordable housing in communities such as ours. And so if, if you'd like, and I, I believe Heather's on the call, she could give you a thumbnail on this, but, but I do, even though we haven't had the, you haven't had the opportunity to hear yet from the communities who are utilizing this tool in their cities, it does seem like a promising thing that addresses an issue that seems very near and dear to all of, all of the council members' hearts in terms of, we've got a real gap in affordable housing here in the community. So that's, that's the last of these kind of larger semi-new things to consider. So I can either stop and you all can discuss, or I can keep going, whatever the preference is.
I, I would suggest if we have a discussion about these three, that worked well for the last two because it kept it compartmentalized. Any counselor have any comment or any budget member have any comment on this set of recommendations? Remy, I see that your hand is up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna go in reverse order on these. I'll start with the construction excise tax, of course, that's something I'm most familiar with as, it's something we've been reviewing in affordable housing for many years as, as was outlined in the, the wonderful informational packet that we received. And I'll also say my thank you to city staff at this moment for, for that. It was a, a great document to prepare for this meeting. And so, you know, that, that is something that I would lean heavily towards and, and I'm looking forward to the, the upcoming presentation as well so that there's a good explanation for the council of how that can play out in the community and how it, it doesn't necessarily just get tagged on to the bottom line, which is a response I hear a lot when it comes up is, oh, well, that's just gonna pass right along to home buyers and therefore actually raise the rate of housing. So I'm looking forward to that and looking forward to the council hearing that. Well, now, this is the test where you go into a room and they tell you three things and then you have to remember them.
Internal financing.
Oh, yes. I, I'm really interested in that. I, I loved reading about that. I, 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 I was also interested in, in staff's concerns about how that information and how that type of programming can be misunderstood. And so I, I would like to have a more thorough understanding of that, even though the, the summary was excellent. I'm, I'm especially interested in that. And then on the business tax license, I mean, to be honest, I think there will be so much pushback in that on the community. And then for what we saw in terms of revenue generation that was correlated with that, and then pair that with the hardships that many, many businesses are continuing to experience. And while I do hear the kind of catch-22, we had funds to distribute, we didn't have a way to access all those businesses, therefore we couldn't notify people about available funds. I, I, I hear that very clearly and I, I understand that. I also think that the business community in general would experience a business tax at this time as a, as a real slap in the face. And I think there would be pushback not just from the community. And I, I don't want to do what, Sal, how did you phrase it earlier? I don't want to be negotiating within, internally too early, but, you know, from a lot of conversation over a number of years, when the discussions of a business tax, when we were not discussing it, were rumored to go around McMinnville. You know, I, I heard a lot then, I heard a lot from the chamber then. And, and so I, I worry that the, the cost benefit of pursuing that sort of revenue stream may not generate what we are hoping for and that the, the communications aspect that you, that you're hoping to achieve through that registry, I would just be curious of what other methodologies we could use to achieve that same goal. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Remy. Anyone else have comments on these three items? Go ahead, Zach. Well, let's see.
It looks like Debbie was first.
Debbie, yeah, Debbie first.
We just gotta go like this sometimes, Debbie, to get him to wake up, make up there.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I guess I'd also heard from some folks who, in past, we've tossed around the business licensing idea, and I know that there's a powerful lobby and some folks are pretty unhappy about that. Tonight was the best I'd felt about it so far in that for the first time, it made sense to me. So maybe in that way, COVID gave us an opportunity. But I think if that is something we continue to explore, we're really gonna have to lay out what the benefits of that are, or some people are gonna be very unhappy. That's all.
Thank you, Debbie. Go ahead, Zach, and then Meredith.
Sure. Put down that beautiful digital hand. There we go. Okay, I'll do the Remy method in reverse order, construction excise tax, and then my, also dovetails to my response for number three, the business license. But as a business owner in McMinnville of a construction company, I, I think coming from that personal standpoint, I would support both the construction excise tax as well as the business license. I've sat in the meeting a few years ago with Remy that the Affordable Housing Commission did on the construction excise tax with, with the who's who of the local builders and found that really informative and look forward to the upcoming presentation. But to me, that makes sense, and it's a way to get targeted funds towards affordable housing, which is much, projects, which is much needed, which I think is great. So I'd be all for that. Establish a business license fee, I'll jump to that one. I think I, I would support that program as well. And I've heard many business owners, I guess I'm more running the downtown bubble and several business owners there have supported that, as well as talking to businesses as they come into town from a, from a design and construction aspect. They often ask, who do I talk to about getting, signing up for my business license fee? And when I blow their socks off and tell them we don't have one, it's like, oh, okay, cool. It not, but I guess the main thing would be not as a revenue generator, more as a tool to deliver services to those businesses. And I think a side benefit, I'd also like to see what Remy had asked for is sort of a more, or another list of intangibles on why, on benefits to that. But I think a couple of them I can come up with was for, you know, fire department and building department don't often get a chance to see those businesses that go in in, in change of use situations where, you know, a restaurant goes in and an old, in an old non-as encumbering of a use as a restaurant is and, and does things, you know, doesn't put in the right safety mechanisms or measures, or doesn't put in the right grease trap, or doesn't put in a grease trap at all, and is now dumping fats and waste and yucky things down into our, our sewer system and our wastewater system. And it's a way to catch all of those things and bring them in and say, welcome to the city of McMinnville, here's how we do things. We look forward to bringing you as part of the team. So I think it's a tool to deliver those services and understand what's going on out there and how we can better gear towards those services. I don't think it should be a revenue generator. I think it should merely pay for itself to deliver those services. And then number four, I, I think I'd be interested in learning more about it. It sounds like whoever's really interested in it really loves the program, and I would take staff's direction on that. So those are my responses to those three. Thanks.
Thank you, Zach.
Hi, yes, can you hear me? I have spotty internet.
Yeah, you're fine, Meredith.
Great. I just wanted to address Jennifer's call for comments from the Budget Committee. I do feel like everyone's time is super valuable, and so sometimes I, when I agree with people, I'm not sure if it's worth raising my hand and just saying, I agree. I, I sometimes, I waffle about that. So I don't know if the thumbs up is good enough to just, to make sure you know my opinion about things earlier. I really agreed with Counselor Gary's points about kind of our ongoing issues with, with the budget. And so it makes sense if we set up this new system with the utility service fees that we continue it moving forward to take care of our shortfalls and our underfunded city. As far as the business license fee, I, it, I really, it sounded like it was pretty important to have a business registry. And I agree that we, we don't necessarily need it to be a revenue source, but just pay for itself, whatever the cost of administering, keeping track of this business registry, that makes sense to me. Important to our city to meet our needs besides financial needs. Thanks.
Thank you, Meredith. I'll weigh in on the three. I'm a yes on all of them, but I, like Zach say, only on a cost recovery for the business license fee. And if we only do cost recovery, I don't think that fee is going to have, it's going to be a negligible cost to each business for us to know who's doing business in McMinnville. Again, if we take the revenue piece out of it and just do cost recovery, I think that will mitigate so many of the concerns that are out there. Any other comments? Go ahead, Kelly.
Oh, I'm not muted. I'm in full support of all three, particularly the construction excise tax. I think we'll blow your socks off here in a month, but I think, I, I was a little reluctant on the business licensing, but I think you guys have more than made your point tonight. So thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Okay, do we have another grouping to go through, Jennifer? Go ahead.
Yes, so, let's see, the share again. Oh, there we go. So the last, the last three are just to, that we want to continue working on these, these all exist now. So the systems, system development charges, discussion about that I've heard pop up from time to time, you know, over the last two years that I've been here, it'll just come up. And so staff does plan and has in its work plans, doing, doing the, the master planning that's required. It's, it's a pretty long process. You can't just change your system development charge methodology without going through a pretty extensive public process, and there are good reasons for that. So that is moving forward, and we attempted to summarize and give details in the, in the resources that we sent to you for the packet so that you, you'd be able to see it summarize what's happening with all of those. Then the franchise fees, we, we're not proposing that there be kind of a reopening of all franchise and we'd like, take a look at our program. But because the franchise fees are on a contract basis, as they are, as contracts are expiring, we will take a step back and make sure that what we're doing in terms of the level of fees and how they all work, we intend to take a good look at those contracts and not just, you know, let's just pass it through for the next period. So that's something Amanda already has on her radar screen as contracts come up. She'll be looking at that. And then the user fee cost recovery, I think that has predominantly been at the forefront in Parks Department work and building, building and planning services. They've both made really concerted and positive efforts in terms of looking critically at what is their cost recovery schemes, what kinds of equity lenses they need to bring to bear on different types of fees, that kind of thing, so that there could, we could build up to a more, I don't know, a more rational, a more best, best practices way of addressing user fees in both of those programs. And so folks will continue to be doing that throughout the year, or years. So, so the, these three things are just on there to summarize that we intend to keep doing this, this work, so. The, this is, yeah, this is the last. The last two things, maybe I should go ahead and do this before breaking for a discussion is I, I put the two benchmarking studies on the slides that I included in the, in the packet. So as, as the mayor pointed out, the reason why, the primary driver for why McMinnville is as low as it is in terms of cost, it's, it's this little guy, it's electric, right? So I, I am becoming better educated, but I am not fully educated on the work that Mack Water and Light has done to be able to, to offer this affordable of utility rates to the city. But it's pretty remarkable. Though I do want to point out that it's not, even though it's the largest differential, it's not the only differential. And you can see that, well, Woodburn is the only other municipality in the group that I looked at that doesn't have some additional service fee associated with their utility bills. We're unique among our group. And, oh, just, just to clarify, the cities that I compare to are the, the five cities in population larger than we are and the six cities in population smaller than we are. And I went six because that grabs Newburgh. So we have at least, you know, two Yamhill County cities. So that's, that's who the benchmarks are, is based just purely on population. And I, so just to get back to the point about the, about this service fees, I think some of it's explained with the property tax reality. So if you, if you look at the city permanent rates, who has the highest rates? McMinnville and Woodburn. So this is, I think this ties into what Jeff articulated earlier is that we have, the property tax system itself, based on these permanent rates, it, it sets communities up for structural funding gaps. And so I think we haven't been forced to move as quickly to service fees because when the rates, the permanent rates were locked in, we happened to benefit from a higher rate than most of the communities who are- rate than most of the communities who are close to Western population. So it's come later to us, the need to grapple with these issues. So I, so I think, um, the property tax reality and, um, what is happening with service fees, they're, they're related. Um, and I just found it interesting going through, um, and benchmarking this stuff. And so that's, that's my spiel, and I will, should I, um, leave any of the slides up? Does anybody have a question on either any of these slides? Um, or I can just take them down and go back to discussion?
Indicate with a, a thumbs up if you want to stay on. If, if not, then we can see everyone in our discussion.
Okay, great.
Let's take it down.
Here we go.
Okay.
Well, thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Jennifer. Again, a great presentation. Uh, thank staff and, and their, their, the executive management team. There are many are on the line. I know it is a lift by everybody in these discussions. But let's go back to that last grouping and seeing if there's anything that you'd like to, uh, share with Jennifer and the team. Meredith?
So, um, if Mack Water and Light is the reason why our utility fees are so low, could they increase them suddenly? Um, and we would already have a fee on top of it?
Um, Mack Water and Light is charging the costs of delivery. Uh, we own our own watershed, okay? And we're maintaining that. We're, we're, we're doing forestation up there. We add about $3 million a year in, in logging up in our watershed. That is appropriate because we want, we don't want to overgrow our watershed. We don't want to have dying trees that aren't being taken out. So one of the reasons, and I'll just share with you, last night, we, we increased our water rates by 3% last night. We went through a study and, and, and for un, for upcoming cost, we have determined that a 3% for the foreseeable future helps us to put money aside for when we start pumping out of the Willamette River. That's going to be about a 50 to $90 million project, and we're starting to save for that. But let me just share with you, you may, you know, you may be interested or not, uh, last night with our proposed increase, the average user of water in McMenville is $39.79. That's the average household. Let me go to the other end of the spectrum, which is our good friends up in Carlton. They're spending $119 a month on water. Right below them is Sheridan at $113 a month. Then we go to Lafayette, that's $86 a month. And then we go to Newburgh, that's 82. So there is so much differential between those that don't have a good water source and the things that they need to be doing. I just, I just add that, uh, just for context. Uh, so back to you, Meredith.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Um, another question I have for Jennifer is on your graph, you said, like, there were different colors for, uh, the fees, like green was Parks and Rec. So do most cities say what their service utility fee is going to go towards? And would ours be, have a specific thing, or would we say just general fund? Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. Um, and I was curious to look at that detail. Um, I'm glad you put your finger on it. So in the cities that we studied, um, there was not one that was just general. They all were, um, pretty, you know, restricted for particular uses. Um, that said, there are larger cities, um, that have put service fees on and approached it in the same way that we have in terms of, well, it's a, it's a general fund. It's an all services, um, kind of thing. So there, I've seen cities look at this in different ways. Um, so we would be in terms of our population group, that little band of, um, Mary 12, uh, communities, we would be different in that regard if we pursued it this way. That said, that's, um, that's a, a policy level decision that it, you all could choose to try to parse out, and we could, you know, stack different fees. Um, I think, uh, it'd be a little bit more difficult on the implementation in terms of the billing to have, um, instead of a single number, you know, stack three or four. But, um, but it's, you know, it's possible. We're at the point where, um, those kinds of choices can absolutely be made.
Thank you to Meredith. Uh, let's go to Adam next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just to follow up on Meredith and your additional context you shared, uh, you know, we're in good spots water-wise, and we kind of control our own destiny with that, with our watershed, from a Mack Water and Light or PUD perspective. But where are we at as far as BPA and the rates that we see coming down the pipeline in the next 10 years from the Monmouth Power Administration and how that could affect our constituents, uh, if the PUD's rate increases on that front?
Um, great, great question, Adam, because we do not generate power other than the small turbo plant we have out at Riverbend. And we are able to provide enough power off of the generation out there, somewhere between 2,000 and 3,000 homes. It just depends at any given time. So, you know, we have our own power source, but it's not significant in a community that has, you know, three, uh, 2,000 to 3,000 homes compared to the, the 12,000 to 14,000 homes that are within our area. Uh, the nice thing is we deal directly with the BPA, and there is so much turmoil. I, last week, I spent a week at a conference up in, uh, Kennewick, Washington with the Northwest, uh, Northwest Public Power Administration, and that's all we talked about, because we're looking at solar and we're looking at wind, but those aren't sustainable, because, you know, when the wind stops blowing, you don't have electricity. And when the sun is gone, you don't have electricity. And we don't have capacity with, with, um, with batteries yet that can take and, and store power for much more than three hours. And so that doesn't help us overnight. So it is big. And, and, you know, we, we feel pretty comfortable, but we have a contract coming up with BPA in two years, and there are, uh, there's talk of trying to privatize BPA. And we don't want that to happen, because then somebody's going to be making pro, uh, profit on top of that. The other piece that we're dealing with is we've got a con, we have a treaty with Canada on the Columbia River, and, uh, and they will not negotiate with us, and the State Department's very slow, but they're taking advantage of the Columbia River, uh, up, up, upstream, and we need to do some things. So absolutely, the horizon for, um, power is much more critical in the future than water for us. And there, there are individuals, you know, they're, they're looking, the, the governor of Utah, uh, the governor of Idaho wants to tear down two dams on the Upper Snake River. Well, we could never replace that capacity. But, you know, the, the environmentalist and the, with the fish and all of those types of things are, are, are going against us from that perspective. I did, uh, I did address, I, I did go to a seminar, a seminar on nuclear power, which is much more safer today than it's ever been, but Oregon's outlawed nuclear power in the state of Oregon, so we will never be able to take advantage of that. We could in the region and by. So I, I don't know if that helps or too much information, Adam, but it was a good question. Go ahead.
I would, from that discussion that you guys had recently, I mean, do they feel that it, we're looking at a 10% increase, or a 2% increase, or a 15% increase?
We, we, we don't get any indication from BPA. They, again, they're governmental, and so they keep things under wraps. I just know that, uh, you know, every year I go back to Washington DC and lobby, uh, uh, the senators and the representatives on that. So I can't give you any direction. Uh, I'll, I'll reach out to John Dietz and tomorrow and talk to him, and then I'll, uh, I'll update the council and the Budget Committee on that question if we do have some insights. But I, I know that we have concerns.
So that, that additional context would just be something that I would take into account when we're, if we move forward with the utility fee, when we're establishing what that fee actually would end up being, so we don't get too far out of balance.
Absolutely. And so we can give you the best estimate that we can prior to us voting on this. So I'll make sure I follow up with that.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, Jeff, you have your hand.
Sorry. A couple of things in partial response to the questions from, uh, both Meredith and Counselor Garvin. Um, uh, electric rates first. Uh, when I met with John today, he indicated, um, he expects this will be the third year with no electrical rate increases. Um, and I think that sort of plays into the, um, partial response to Meredith as well. For roughly 130 years or so, Mack Water and Light has been a pretty, uh, fiscally conservative and, and long-range focused organization. It's the oldest municipal utility in Oregon, I think.
It is.
And so we have that as a sort of a, not just a point of pride, but an indication that that stability has really paid off over the long term. And while, yes, the Board of Water and Light has rate-making authority, um, they're also a creature of the city's charter, and the city council controls who is on that board. And so, uh, we have never, in my, uh, understanding, had to exercise, uh, any particular influence to try to control that board, to be more or, you know, less thoughtful in terms of their long-range, uh, perspective on the utility. I think that, that has part of that culture for a long period of time. And, and that doesn't mean there aren't periodically rate increases. But it, it feels to me, um, like, uh, the board has historically been very thoughtful and very careful, and has made business decisions to avoid, um, large spikes in the rates. Uh, historically, they tend to keep the rate, um, changes pretty nominal on a sort of cost of living basis, so they are periodically indexed. And, and so they have avoided the spikes that you see in other, uh, in other communities for those kinds of reasons, I think.
Thank you for that context, uh, Jeff, and absolutely right. I mean, we've got two border, uh, board commission members, uh, Tom Tankersley that's been on that commission for 35 years. He knows the ins and outs, and with his legal mind is great. And then, you know, Ed Gormly, who'd been mayor for 25 years, and then the last 10 years serving on that board, he's 35. So we've got stability, we have knowledge, and Ed brings the plumbing piece to the, to the table there. But you're absolutely right. We control who goes on that, on that, that committee. You know, I've been in front of you three times over the last two years to replace people that have gone off that board. And it is, uh, it is nominated by the mayor, but it is, uh, it is voted on by the city council. Allison, you have your hand?
Um, it's just a short question, if it wouldn't take, uh, someone too long to explain. Is there a reason why system development charges can't be charged to industrial and commercial? Is that a statute-driven? Um, uh, for Parks and Rec, I'm talking about for, for the support of Parks and Rec, because I'm not terribly fond of the fact that that's all borne by residential, that when we're looking at the equity that we heard about in the beginning of this council presentation, I would prefer to see that commercial and industrial paid those fees.
Yeah, um, statutorily, um, it's permitted, and, um, it was a choice made, um, back when the SDCs were, um, first initiated. So, um, I don't know if, uh, if anyone else on the call, uh, Susan or Jeff, um, might have, you know, more to add, but, but I do think staff share your concern, Allison.
So Susan may want to weigh in on this issue as well. Um, my perspective on this is that, uh, when systems development charges were first, uh, put in place in Oregon, it's always been a very heavily regulated area. And I would say that the view in the, probably the 70s and the 80s, when most communities started looking at, um, parks, systems development charges, were that parks were generally seen as a community asset primarily used by the residents of the community. And that was the rationale to essentially levy those systems development charges on, uh, residential development. I think as our economies have changed and evolved and become more complicated in a lot of ways, we have also seen that parks and open spaces are an important draw for business and industry. And many businesses and industries pay attention to the public assets that exist in a community for, for business impact, not just for the benefit of their employees, uh, but as an asset that they think adds quality of life and, um, access for their, um, organizations to get, uh, you know, to, to, to do things that, and have access to services and facilities that really add to the quality of life, not just for the people who live in a community, but for the people who work in a community. And we're a net importer of jobs every day. Um, I think that that, um, that history and that tradition has been evolving, and I think more and more communities are looking at, um, parks and open space as a business and an economic development asset as well. And, um, and as, um, Jennifer said, there's no statutory bar on the ability to levy, um, systems development charges for park development on, uh, commercial and industrial, um, permit, uh, or development. So, uh, with that, I think that's sort of the old reason. Um, I think there is a, a case to be made that businesses benefit directly from parks and open spaces in a community. And, and it's the really, the, the benefit derived from the varieties of infrastructure that are the justification for systems development charge in the first place.
Thank you, Jeff. Susan?
Uh, I don't think I could say it any better than Jennifer and Jeff just did. The only thing I would say is it is a little bit of a laborious and somewhat, um, litigious process to update your methodology. So we really want to make sure that we do that correctly, um, and take the time that we need to make sure it withstands any challenges before we can add that in. Um, Amanda and I did look at the, uh, original resolution or ordinances to see if there was a quick surgical way we could do that. Um, Jeff asked us to do that review. There is not. We really need to go through the whole process. So we will build that into the Parks Master Plan. But I think, I think everybody, uh, who has talked has, is, we're all on the same page about that. We need to look at that.
Thank you, Susan. Uh, let's go up to Zach.
Uh, just add two things, one to the Parks and one to the, another side part of the SDC. Uh, I think Jeff explained it really well, and Allison, I would only add, uh, I share your concern. And, uh, going forward, if we're able to use, um, some ARPA funds as well as in conjunction with staff capacity coming from, rolling from MAC PAC and invest in pushing forward and pulling the, pulling the Parks Master Plan out of the further down the line dance card and onto the sooner dance card, um, that would be, I believe, part of that discussion is updating that and, and updating that methodology as well as, um, if we want to continue to do that, that way, or change the way we do that and apply it more equitably. So, um, that would be exciting to be able to do. Um, secondly, on the SDC methodology, my only, you know, it's, we have, uh, after our UGB, we have a lot of plans and triggers when we get there. Um, speaking of the play, upcoming slate of planning programs that would involve that, TSP, Parks Master Plan, those types of things. But, um, and those are all ways in which we change and usually go up. But my, my interest in SDC is maybe counter to, um, the whole discussion about sustainable revenue sources and actually looking at ways to, that we are, um, disproportionately affecting what does or does not get done in the city and making sure that the, the SDC fees aren't, um, preventing things from going in. And I know, just being on the front lines of trying to build and remodel homes and, and work for commercial projects, that cost of construction is, is its own beast, but, um, and, and people, there's a steep learning curve to what, what is or isn't reasonable or understandable. But some fees that we have, and some fees everywhere that are just sort of outliers in what is or isn't reasonable and, and is a bur, are a burden to not only general businesses, but perhaps businesses and endeavors that could provide high levels of societal benefits, like daycares being one of them, or, and, and there's, there's others in the list, but, um, ways that we could look at that to make sure that it's being applied equitably, um, would be great.
Thank you, Zach. Any other discussions or questions for this evening's discussion? Go ahead, Jennifer.
Yeah, um, as we're, as we're wrapping up, if, if we, if we are wrapped up, um, I do want to make an ARPA commercial before we, um, before we close. I do want to make an ARPA commercial before we, before we close. So I'll wait to see if, are there more comments or things about the resources discussion? I think there, there are a handful of details we want to get back to you ahead of your October 20th meeting on resources, but...
It doesn't look like there's any hands.
I guess I do, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor. That, that deadline for, that date for that October 20th, that next one, what, what, do you have direction to bring stuff back to us? What's the, what do we need to do to keep the process moving forward? I know as we, as we talked about budgets are about ready to be, started to be formulated. Does that keep us on track and that provide us the opportunity to get to a spot where we get to make decisions and have that next layer of, of discussion and direction to provide staff the ability to impact the budget next year, if that's where we go?
Yes, I believe it does. My sense coming out of this conversation is that there will likely be strong consensus by the, this joint committee on the 20th to essentially recommend in line with the staff's recommendations. And we will bring a few more details, and maybe one or two would fall off, I'm not sure. But my, my strong sense is that there is consensus around the, the service fee and it being based on, in some way, utility billing levels. So if we get a recommendation, and I will, since the consensus seems pretty strong, I will go ahead and pre-work with Amanda on putting together both what a recommendation wording might look like and a companion council action, so that you all kind of can see what that language would look like, so that we could put that on your next formal council meeting, which would follow in less than a week. So it would be Wednesday, and then the next Tuesday. And you all would be able to vote formally as council, and we're absolutely on timeline track.
Cool. Thank you very much. That sounds really delightful.
Yes.
Okay, Jennifer, if you want to move over to the ARPA discussion?
Yes, so, so it's a, it's a little ARPA commercial. I will share my screen. I have got a single slide. So here, here's what's coming down the road on, on this. So on the 12th, we are hoping that you all will be in a position to be able to make recommendations on ARPA investments. And so the, the staff is getting together on Friday of this week to do the same kind of work that we did on the resources, to come up with a staff recommendation. And we will be providing a similarly, you know, hefty package to the Budget Committee and to the council to help inform your ability to, to get there on the 12th. I also want to highlight that there, a community survey was launched this week. It's sitting on the finance page, which now has a new ARPA page. Now, this, this discussion has gone really well, but I think the survey, there were hiccups. So this, this was a, it will be a learning experience. It's the first time that we're out there doing it. And so we're making adjustments in time in terms of being able to round out the questions that are included. So, so, but we're really excited to see what happens with the community survey and what kind of data that we get. And I will be summarizing that and bringing it to you as well as part of the inputs for the American Rescue Plan discussion. Then, thirdly, just want to note, in our prior discussion about ARPA, you all, there was consensus about, yes, we need support, some staffing support to be able to execute on this grant properly over the life of the grant. So there is a job description that we've put together, and we're, we're close to wanting to post it. And it's our intention to circulate that out to you all, so that you can give it a look, see what we're thinking of hiring for, and get some feedback. If you think we're on track, or if this really wasn't what you expected, we can, you know, make some changes before we post. So there's that. And then just finally, our first report is due in less than a month. So, so we'll be working on that. So that, that's my ARPA commercial. It, just wanted to make sure that you all knew that this stuff was also rolling pretty quickly in the near term. So.
Okay. Meredith?
I just had a question. I think Jeff mentioned at the beginning of the meeting that there is a meeting about services or a presentation about services next week. Is that, is the Budget Committee invited to that? I know we can always watch it, but I wondered, which day is that?
It's Tuesday. It'll start at 7:00. I haven't looked at the agenda yet to get a sense of whether the core services piece would be early on in the meeting. But yes, it would, it would be a very important companion piece to the resources discussion if you all would be able to sign, sign on to that meeting. It was not on our original calendar. I apologize for that. But, but I think it would be very useful, if you can, to join in on that one as well.
And so Meredith, that is our regularly scheduled second city council meeting in the month. That starts at 7:00. So it'll be a presentation and a discussion at city council. Sal?
Thanks, Mayor. Jennifer, just real quick, do you know what dates the federal government will be dispersing their tranches of money?
Oh, it's, it's out. We have ours.
Oh, we have the, the, the full, or the, the first?
We have the first half. So, yeah, Oregon is, like, half the states got everybody's two years, and half the states didn't. So Oregon actually has our 100% share. They've only dispersed us half of it. And we'll get the other half, you know, 11 months from now.
So the state, the states received everything, and they've dispersed out half of what they've received in this plan?
Right.
Okay.
Which is what Treasury directed them to do. So they're doing what Treasury asked them.
Thank you.
You bet.
Okay, a last call for Jeff. I see your hands up.
Thank you, Mayor. You lower the hand. Just to give you a sense of how things look at next week's agenda for the Budget Committee members, we are expecting to have a couple of, well, we have a couple of proclamations, public input, and a couple of presentations ahead of this discussion around core services. Did we notice this as a work session? I don't think we did. I apologize for that. My guess is it'll be around probably 8 o'clock when we get to that issue, just based on the other things that are on the agenda. You're certainly welcome to come listen to the proclamations and the other presentations. But my guess is we'll get to that. I have them around 8:00.
Thank you, Jeff. Any other comments? Seeing no hands. Thank you, everyone, for a great, respectful discussion tonight. I think we covered a lot. We got opinions out. I think we're open for what's to come down the road. And so it is 8:19 right now, so we've done a good job, I think, of managing our time this evening. And so I will close our work session this evening. Thanks, everyone, and have a good evening.